Good evening. Welcome to the March 8, 2022 Combined Work Session and Regular In-Person and Virtual Meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the Walter M. Senko Elementary School Students Maxim Ganges and Corinne Lyons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Such amazing students. Thank you very much, students. Thank you for leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Walter M. Senko Elementary School Principal, Ms. Kamisha Simpson, and students Maxim Ganges and Corinne Lyons, who we just met, on igniting a passion for learning.
Good evening, Dr. McGary, President Brown, School Board members, and Upper Darby community. My name is Kamisha Simpson, and I have the privilege of being the principal at Walter M. Senko Elementary School. I'm elated to be standing here in front of you tonight, and honored to have the pleasure to share the ways our school team unites, to provide opportunities for all learners in pursuit of excellence. Through this presentation, I hope it is evident that our goal is to establish educational environments that promote decision-making, facilitate inquiry, and build students' understanding of the world they live in. This school year, our students showed up with a newfound appreciation for their peers and teachers. Despite the challenges that they faced during our school closure and virtual learning models, we wanted to maximize on their excitement, and we quickly realized that our school's goal was to ignite a passion for learning. Elementary school is the first experience our students have at formal schooling, and we have the ability to create the pathway our students need to be future world leaders. Students' thoughts, opinions, and voices are the heartbeat of our building. Our students were the driving force behind the opportunities you will hear about tonight. As educators, we have the crucial role of preparing our world's future leaders. Our first step in doing so is giving our students the skills and platform to be heard. You will now hear from Corinne Lyons, one of our 5th grade Student Council members, and Maxim Ganges, our 5th grade class president. They will share about their experiences this school year.
My name is Corinne Lyons, and I am a 5th grade student at Walter M. Senko Elementary School. There are a lot of things our principal and teachers do to ignite our passion to learn. We have multiple clubs that teach us things that are important outside of our classrooms. For example, our Lego League club teaches kids to build safely and have fun after school hours. And then we have our Reno Olympics team. Most people know what this is, but we basically read eight to 10 books at the minimum and compete in competitions. We also get shirts that represent our Reno Olympics, not to mention we have science explorers. Although I don't do science explorers now, I did it in 2nd grade. Our science explorers have different topics each marking period, and here are some things we do inside of our classroom to ignite the passion of learning. One thing we do, we definitely do, that I know of, is STEM lessons with our seminar teacher, Mrs. Clary, once every month. We do fun lessons and higher-thinking lessons that challenge us. We also have PSSA tests in April. The people that are taking the PSSA test usually get treats for motivation. We also have public speaking, all in 5th grade. We do announcements and speak in front of our class for public speaking practice and to read more fluently. We also, also our teachers here at Senko separate us into small groups that can help with our performance. So, most of the people were to have the same score, they would be put inside the same group for what they need help with. The last thing I would like to talk about is our Student Council. Our Student Council is a group of 4th and 5th grade students that want to make our school a better place. I am one of the Student Council members. We work hard on things like kindness posters, and we help around the school and do a lot more. I've been at Walter M. Senko for five years, and I definitely can say I love it here, and I have came a long way since 1st grade. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Hello, I'm Maxim Ganges, a 5th grader and Student Council President at Walter M. Senko Elementary School. As the president of Senko Student Council, it is my honor to be here to speak on behalf of the student body about what a wonderful school Senko is. First and foremost, Senko teaches us the value of education. It also teaches us what it means to be a Senko royal. As our district symbols, the Royal Oak Tree and the crown show, it means to be strong in one's commitment to learn, it means to be able to endure the challenges of hard work, and it means to stand proud, to be an achiever and a leader. I have been at Senko for five years, and during that time, it has been a pleasure working with my classmates, teachers, and principal. Very recently, we went through COVID-19 and virtual learning. During that time, in 3rd grade, I had Mr. Singleton, who helped me stay focused and get the most out of my school year. We started out in person and didn't have video in the end, but he always made sure I got my work done on time during asynchronous learning. In 4th grade, I had Ms. Robinson and Ms. Manning, who taught us via Google Meets. They were nice and supportive to all the students during this time. They played games with us during breaks and helped us with our work whenever we needed it. Now we are back, and I have Ms. Henry, who is helping our brains transition back into in-person learning. During the pandemic, we had great support and awesome teachers. The first thing Senko did was give us all Chromebooks so we could do asynchronous work and go into Google Meets to learn with them. Our teachers made sure we still had our extracurricular activities like spelling bees, Reading Olympics, science explorers, music lessons, virtual field trips, and virtual home and school meetings. We also had special events like after-school movie nights. In virtual field trips, my class went to the San Diego Zoo. For one of the movie nights, we watched Coco. We even threw a party at the end of the year. There were contests, and people who got first, second, and third place got cash prizes. We also had an ice cream social at our local Cardington Fields. The school brought an ice cream truck, and everyone got to hang out with their friends and have treats with their mask on. There was a book fair at Cardington Fields as well. Ms. Simpson and Ms. Henry also helped us form 4th and 5th grade Student Council during the virtual learning. We had an online council member induction ceremony. Our pandemic Student Council also voted for new clubs at Senko, and our teachers committed to helping us make the Art Club and Lego Club happen. My music teacher, Mr. Labondi, taught me through virtual learning how to play the trumpet. Every B-day, he would meet for lessons using Google Meets. He always pushed me to practice my instrument and always said this: "Practice makes permanent, instead of practice makes perfect, because if you practice wrong, then it's not perfect, but it is permanent." Senko also let me learn another instrument through the pandemic. My orchestra teacher, Ms. Nelson, has been working with me since 3rd grade, which is when the pandemic started. Ms. Nelson taught me how to play the string bass. These are just a few examples of the wonderful things Senko provided for us during the pandemic. I hope this helps you better understand why I am so proud to be the Senko Student Council President and all the great things Senko has done through the pandemic, how much great work Ms. Simpson and our teachers put in to make it fun and easy to learn, even though we were in virtual learning. Thank you for giving me this time to share my thoughts and appreciation with you here today.
Thank you to Jason Taylor for producing the video you are now going to watch that highlights how we are sparking students' curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking skills.
Initially, coming back, we found, once the students were in front of us and we were in it day-to-day, that we really wanted to get our students excited again for learning. We wanted to offer experiences that enhanced what was being offered in the classroom. And oddly enough, we just found a common trend. It was engaging students through science and STEM.
STEM is an acronym. It stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and it's the integration of all four of those content areas, and it allows students to problem-solve and kind of design and make up solutions to real-world problems.
With the help of our instructional coaches, we were able to facilitate a school-wide STEM day.
So, on that day, we had many different activities going on throughout the building within different age groups, all 1st through 5th grade, whether it be using the B-bots or the microbits. We can come in, assist, help guide, and, you know, see the learning in action.
B-bots are programmable robots, great for younger students because all you need to use is arrows and turd signals and the "go" button.
Students were coding robots and utilizing English and language arts skills, utilizing mathematics to program their robots to follow a certain path.
And then another thing that they learn is they have to start over after each one, reset it. So, they also learn to debug. So, okay, what was the error that I made, and how can I fix that error? And then they work in partners. They're collaborating, and they're working together to formulate that, and there's a lot of laughing, there's a lot of conversation.
The cheering is unbelievable. They get so excited, and in grades 4 through 5, we were able to use the microbits with them.
The microbits are great as well. It's very simple technology, right? It's a little screen that you can make stuff appear on the screen, and it also makes sounds, okay? So, there's nothing really fancy. And then on the computer, you're using block coding, and then that block coding goes on to the little screen.
We started very simple with just having the students program the microbit to make their name flash on the microbit.
You can create awesome things, such as a heart, which we did in class. It's like really fun to like create something that is connected to your computer to something else, and I just like that.
They're creating something, and they're producing something out of this coding. So, coding is no longer this abstract thing that they don't understand, but they can see the connection.
Science explorers was something we started last year, and it was just, you know, science experiments and kits that were pre-made and set for them. We kind of amped it up this year. We wanted to have our students experience creating something on their own and wanted to make sure they still got to interact with an expert, and that's when we collaborated with Abrahn and Mr. McCarthy from Create Labs.
So, initially, we wanted to do an introductory course to aquaponics, which is a sustainable form of agriculture. We decided that we were going to go with this route of a take-home, small aquaponic system, so students that were virtual, actually, it involved a lot more.
Mr. McCarthy gave us a pack of seeds. There are these little balls filled with soil, and basically, we put the seeds on them, and then we put them in the cup thingies where our fish are. So, basically, there's nitrite and nitrate that the fish's poop is left, and then if there's enough nitrite and nitrate in the water, the plants will hopefully grow.
Through this whole experience, they have seen one idea can turn into something greater, and that, you know, creativity is really the key to that innovation that they're going to need in the future.
I encourage you to try it, because it's very fun, especially if you're a nature lover.
Lego League was another club idea that our students brought to us through surveying them.
Lego League is basically like a club to learn and build Legos.
That really is the concept of STEM, having the freedom to explore.
You can really build anything you think of or imagine, and get to like express just everything that I have in my mind.
Students had an opportunity to start with kind of the starter kits, and then some students kicked it up a notch and started to research with their kits what else they could build.
We are making something. One is an abandoned house, and in front of the abandoned house is the front yard. Next to the right of the abandoned house is like an airport, so you could fly off to the other spots, and then there's a sea, and then there's like a desert over here. He made a dune buggy, so you can play around in the desert, and then he like...
So, I'm building a Lego City building, and I'm not done with it, because it might take a whole week.
One bee, like a bee person, a castle, and my friends make a llama and rainbows. We're trying to create the Commander Chicken, but I have to find those parts. My favorite part about it is we can share pieces and build whatever we want.
I think it just helps you express your feelings in a different way.
And that, I believe, is honestly the goal of STEM, to allow them to feel like they can innovate through exploration, through troubleshooting, and through getting down and grappling with concepts that they are unfamiliar with.
The younger we get students to participate in ways like this, the more that they'll be able to take some of the skills like problem-solving and designing and use that in their future careers, even if it's not coding or science. These are skills that students will be able to use the rest of their lives.
I feel that our students here, once they go on to middle school and high school and even college, that they will feel comfortable and confident in themselves and know that they have the ability to conquer whatever is in front of them.
Thank you.
Kamisha, that was fantastic. Thank you for that great presentation, and some wonderful things going on at Senko. Maxim and Corinne, boy, I don't remember being that eloquent in 5th grade or in elementary school, maybe in middle school. You're very smart with a bright future, so thank you for that. Let's give them one more round of applause. Let's see, I have to get to Senko. I do want to see the coding, so I will be making a trip to Senko. The third item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Charles Kelly Elementary School Principal, Mr. Daniel Highland and Ms. Alexis Cristiano on PBIS.
Good evening, Superintendent McGary, President Brown, members of the School Board, students, staff, and community members. My name is Daniel Highland, and I have the privilege of being the principal of Charles Kelly Elementary School. This year, as I return to Upper Darby and Charles Kelly, our students and staff were also returning to full in-person instruction for the first time since the start of the pandemic. It was a reintroduction of what it was like to be an in-person student, and for some, their first time seeing this learning environment. We wanted to actively promote a positive culture in the building, physically and virtually, and we wanted to remind everyone how much fun learning can be. To do this, we turned to PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. As a part of PBIS, we follow the three Bs, which are to be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. Typically, when one of our students is caught following the three Bs, they earn a royal award, but at Charles Kelly, we love to go a step beyond. We wanted to incentivize this at a building level to reward our entire school by showing them what it means to work together by following the three Bs. Through the direction of our lead teacher, Alexis Cristiano, we picked a number of royal awards we would earn each month so that we could work together to earn our incentive. But don't just take it from me. Through the power of Jason Taylor's video talents, you will get to see just how amazing Charles Kelly is and what PBIS and royal awards mean to our students.
PBIS happens everywhere. It's not just in the classroom. It's lunch, recess, the bus. It's just constantly telling them what they're doing correctly and reinforcing that behavior.
Now that we're back in school at Charles Kelly, you know, we're really kind of just reviewing our three Bs: be safe, be respectful, be responsible.
If you do these stuff, you could possibly get a royal award.
Royal awards are when you are doing an amazing job of following the three Bs, and you can get them from your teacher.
You don't have to like do it just because a teacher is there. You have to get like caught doing it. It's like a little square that you get to write your name on.
They are collected by the teacher in a bin, and then the bins are brought down to the main office, and on Wednesdays and Fridays, at the end of the day, Mr. Highland gets on the PA system, and he pulls names from each grade, and those students are then cheered on by the rest of the school.
Lunch is first, and we're going to start with room 1, 2, and Allison, you are...
And if your name gets called on the speaker, then you get to go to the office and pick a prize.
Normally, they have like little fidgets. They love their fidget spinners and their slinkies and their cool pencils with the cool erasers.
The kids love them. I don't know. They show them off when they get them.
It feels super like exciting, and like it just feels like you did something really good in your life.
And in addition, we have our classroom royal awards as well, and every time a classroom earns 10 royal awards for their class, they get an extra recess, which I've heard the kids really enjoy getting outside and getting that extra fresh air.
The monthly challenges we've been doing recently is how many royal awards, individual royal awards, can we get in a month?
Every month, we change up the incentive. You know, we ask the teachers, what do you think the students want to work for, and we set a goal for ourselves.
We've been ramping it up. It was, first it was 500, then it was, you know, 700. I don't remember the numbers, but we were keeping track of how many individual royal awards the kids have been getting, and then there have been awards for that.
The best one we did was definitely our first one. We kicked off with plying Mr. Highland in the face. They just enjoyed like laughing and like building that relationship with Mr. Highland every time they saw him in the hallway. They were like, "Oh, Mr. Pyland, we're going to get you, Mr. Pyland."
Everyone, like, class was all waiting for it, all waiting for it to happen. Everyone was super excited about it.
And when we met our goal, we got to do a Google Meet, then everybody zoomed in and watched Mr. Highland get pied in the face, which was very enjoyable.
Oh, wow.
We were like shocked. It was very funny. And we got to eat pumpkin pie.
Another one that we did was a Movie in Pajama Day. So, yeah, during the month of November, we were working towards that Movie in Pajama Day, and the kids were looking forward to like just snuggling up and relaxing with a good movie.
Another award was they got to play Bingo, which we did as a whole building, which was really fun.
There's like this bingo tournament where like they announced it on the loudspeaker.
They were very excited because it was bigger prizes. The bigger prizes were some really cool like drawstring bags, and they had like emojis on it, which the kids really loved. It just adds that fun aspect that they look forward to every day, and it kind of helped to build that relationship with them. Ms. Cristiano, did you count the royal awards yet? Like, how many are we at? They get very excited. It gets them involved in the school process as well as building that relationship with me and Mr. Highland.
You shouldn't do it just for rewards. You should do it because it's good. It's good for everyone.
Learning can be hard, but it's nice to point out when, you know, you're doing the right thing, and if you work hard, you're going to go far. That's what I think PBIS is all about.
I am proud to say that our Charles Kelly scholars worked very hard, and they have earned their incentive every month for this school year. This would not be possible without Ms. Cristiano and our amazing faculty and staff at Charles Kelly. Also, a very special thank you goes out to Mr. Jason Taylor for putting our video together tonight. Jason does an amazing job of capturing all the magic at Charles Kelly. I would also, oh, nope, we can, yep, we could definitely... I would also like to publicly thank Dr. McGary and the board for all their support this year. I would also like to thank Mr. Ed Brown for his support as our Charles Kelly liaison, and he is also an excellent reader during Read Across America Week, so thank you. And everyone, have a great night, and thank you for allowing us to talk about Charles Kelly.
Dan?
Yes, Dan Highland's going. There's a lot of compliments to people, but Dr. Bagliese is in the back of the room, and I do want to acknowledge Chris. PBIS at times has been a struggle to pull off here in the school district, but I would acknowledge your hard work over the years, helping us get to this point. It was a vision of ours early on, 10, 11 years ago. We were laughed out of a performing arts center. We talked about character and building character in our kids, and I think you deserve a lot of credit helping us get to this point, so.
Mr. Highland and Ms. Cristiano, I can vouch for the atmosphere at Charles Kelly. I really had a great time there, and it looks like you're continuing to do great things at Charles Kelly, so thank you for that. Let's give them one round of applause. The next item on the work session agenda is a presentation of winners of the International Mother Language Day poster contest by Dr. Greg Manfrey.
Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, Dr. McGary, my colleagues in the audience, and the members of the Upper Darby community. International Mother Language Day is a worldwide annual observance recognized this year on February 22nd. It is a day that was established to promote awareness of linguistic and cultural diversity. Every year since 2014, Upper Darby School District observes International Mother Language Day by holding a poster contest celebrating our school district and our township's diversity. In addition, this year, we provided our students with lessons about International Mother Language Day, and those lessons were delivered on International Mother Language Day on February 22nd. Our annual theme for our poster contest is "Out of Many Languages Comes One Community." In Upper Darby School District, there are over 90 different languages represented. Our teachers take great pride in providing students of limited English proficiency the opportunity to learn English while celebrating their own languages and cultures. At the same time, our professional staff, both teachers and administrators, learn from our students and families regarding their culture and way of life. Our annual theme could not be more appropriate. For the Upper Darby School District truly exemplifies a community that is united out of many languages and many cultures. We're so proud of all of our students, and especially those students who have celebrated their language and culture by participating in our poster contest this year. I would like to thank Frank Salerno, our outgoing Director of Elementary Education, our Director of Communications, Mrs. Buford, for her support, Mrs. Eileen Caruso, Ms. Joanna DeMarco, for their assistance in promoting this event, Mrs. Christine Kelly for helping as a judge this year, and of course, our wonderful principals and teachers who have encouraged the participation of our students in this annual event. On the screen behind me, you can see our elementary school's second-place winner. By the way, our first-place winner wins a two-year subscription to National Geographic Online. Our second-place winners at each level win a one-year subscription to National Geographic Online, which I think the winners from last year really are enjoying. Our second-place poster for the elementary school is our 4th grader from Primus Elementary School, Alisa El Um. Is she here this evening? Our first-place winner is a 2nd grade, Bywood, 2nd grade, Bywood Elementary School student, Mohaiman A. Alrab. Mohaiman, come on up. Good job, good job. Stay right there. We're going to take pictures later. At the middle school level, our second-place winner was Carla de La Cruz, 8th grade at Drexel Hill Middle School. I believe Carla de La Cruz is here. No, didn't make it. And our first-place winner at the middle school level, Beverly Hills Middle School, 8th Our high school second-place winner, Harinderjeet Rakra, and I know he is here because I greeted And our first-place winner at the high school, I just think this is really beautiful and well-done, Yaslin Cardona.
Such amazing talent in our district. Let's give them one round of applause, please. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of citation from State Representative Gina H. Curry, and I think Ms. Fabiola Alfred is representing her. She's the constituent service advisor, and we're honored to have State Representative Mike Zabel here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to be here on behalf of State Representative Gina Curry. Unfortunately, she won't be here tonight. She apologizes for not being here to her former board, so I am proud to be an alumna of Upper Darby School District. It's so good to be home. I'm a little nervous, so I'm sorry, but I am a proud alumna of Upper Darby School District, class of 2017. But I am a proud alumna of Upper Darby School District, class of 2017. I am a product of the hard work and dedication of this school board. I stand here with royal pride tonight, not only because I work for the amazing former vice president of the school board, but because it is truly about service today. And as we honor the Upper Darby School Board for their selfless service, unwavering dedication and commitment to the Upper Darby School District, I too am honored to work for the residents and students of this district. Talk about a full circle. Like, President, President Brown, you're still here, and I remember you were here during my time, and Ms. Rachel, talk about being historical. Like, she's still here. I'm like, wow, it's amazing, but I'm just kidding. I pride myself speaking on behalf of everyone in this room by saying thank you for your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I am not an Upper Darby alumnus, but having watched a couple of the presentations here, I think I'm ready to go back to elementary school, particularly Lego League. I love Lego League. As, as a matter of fact, I'll, I'll tell you something. If you ever visit my office in Harrisburg, I have a number of Lego sets built there because when I am in Harrisburg waiting for time, sometimes we're sitting around, we're waiting, we're on long Zoom calls, that sort of thing, and the way I pass time with my hands is to build Lego sets as we're going. So I definitely, I might apply. I don't know if there's an age limit, but I'm willing to do it. We are here to recognize, January, actually, was School Director Week, Month, and I've come to recognize that in the past, but with scheduling and with COVID, we're finally here. And look, I know many of you personally, and you are not the sort to toot your own horn. That's not what being a school director is about. So I'm gonna sing your praises for a second because it is a job that carries enormous responsibility and requires just generosity of spirit in order for you to do it. It is not a paid position. There is certainly, in terms of what the decisions you make, there are parents and teachers and, and staff and faculty who are all very invested in the choices you make, and so you have great responsibility, I don't need to tell you, in those choices. And you generously donate your time for that, and, and I'm, I'm blown away by it. And I was thinking about this as, as I was coming over here. In fact, I was coming, I came here literally about 20 minutes ago. I left Aronamick Elementary where my son was having a basketball practice. And I was just thinking, first of all, as, as I go there and it's under construction, I was so excited because, you know, the basketball gym right now is adequate, it's But I think it's wonderful that you have made the effort, and it is a real effort to invest in our children across the school district in so many places. And I know from talking with many of you and being involved on, sometimes on the state side, of how much work it is to get things that you've gotten done. And there, if there is leadership, the greatest leadership in Upper Darby right now is coming from Upper Darby School District and particularly its school board directors. So thank you for making the choice and making the sacrifices and fighting the fight to invest in our children. I'm excited for Aronamick. I'm excited for bringing kids back into the school district. I'm excited for a new middle school in Clifton Heights, and all of that is part of your work, and we're greatly appreciative of it. So can everyone please give our school directors a round of applause? Thank you. And I also want to thank you frankly for guiding us through the last two years. We, we're just, with Dr. Monica Taylor, another school board alumna, at a memorial for almost two years ago to the day was the first COVID case in Delaware County, almost two years ago today. I don't know if that feels like a short time ago or 10 years ago, or it's, it's fast and short at the same time, but I don't need to tell you, as, as a state legislator, I was making difficult calls every day, and I think you were making even harder calls. And we're so, I know we're all grateful to be back in in-person learning, but thank you for making, being willing to step up and making those difficult choices that, where you had to balance so many things. So thank you for that. And as I think about this, and I know I'm talking about all the hard things you had to do, but I get why you do it, because I've been in here for 20 minutes. And the joy that I felt just from watching 20 minutes of these presentations, and a little bit of relief that that student council president is too young to run against me. I checked, it's in the Constitution, you're too young, but you've got a big future ahead of you. No, the joy that you get from, I get why you do it, but I'm also profoundly, as, as someone who lives in Upper Darby, I'm so grateful for all of your efforts. So again, one more time, on behalf of, I know Representative Curry really wished that she could be here, but you know well how, how highly she thinks of you. So thank you all for this. We are greatly appreciative of, of all the work that you do. It is not unnoticed, it is not unappreciated, and it won't be forgotten. So thank you very much. And we will pass these out to you individually so that you have them, but thank you, thank you for your time.
I just want to speak on behalf of the board and say we are humbled, we're honored to have Ms. Fabiola Alfred, who's representing State Rep Gina H. Curry, and State Rep Mike Zabel here to, to recognize our efforts and our time commitment. We take pride in being school board directors, so we humbly thank you for this recognition.
All right. Go ahead. Get out of my way. All right. One, two. Thank you, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Absolutely good to see you.
Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures, sir?
Yes, Board President Brown. We have three different ways to participate. Obviously, tonight's evening is being livestream via our Upper Darby School District YouTube channel. Those who are viewing at home or in, as they're moving in their car, which I hope you're not, you can phone in to 610-789-7200, extension 2000. For tonight, it's a legislative meeting, board meeting, so you would please need to provide your comments. It's comment only tonight to the specific report that the board will consider before taking action, and they'll take your comments into consideration. You can also email in your comments to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Please provide your name, address, and again, the specific report you'd like to comment on, and the board will take that into consideration before taking action. There's also a general comment section. For purposes of in-person comments, you would have to have signed in by 7:30. It's a speaker list that's here. If you are participating publicly, virtually, you would have to provide a general comment by 7:30, and the board will read that into the record at the end of the meeting during the general speaking comments. You could also phone that in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Those who are in person get to go first. So when a report comes up, and after the board has a conversation before they take action, they'll ask for public comments after they ask for comments from the board. Anybody in the audience who wants to comment on a specific report can come to the microphone, please provide your name and your address, and obviously, you're commenting on that report, and the board will listen to your comment. It's a three-minute comment, and the board will take that into consideration before taking any action. Again, those who are in person will go first, and then we'll follow in-person comments on specific reports with virtual or phoned-in comments. Board President Brown, happy to remind everybody again if I, if I need to throughout the meeting tonight.
Please do. Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:15 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, board secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague?
Present.
Mr. Des Neuerz?
Present.
I'll note that Board Director Neal did step out for a minute, was in attendance. We'll record his attendance when he returns. Mr. Warsavage?
Present.
Ms. Lamar Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a second to approve that previously posted agenda? The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments tonight.
Okay. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of February 8th, 2028, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to secretary, please. Director Williams.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to treasurer, please. Director Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reporter to treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. And now we will have the student representative report from Randy Lane and Majabin Tapeter.
Good evening. Today's building of reports will be Aronamick Elementary, Upper Darby High School, and Primus Elementary. Aronamick Elementary celebrated Read Across America Week for the first week of March. Their, oh, sorry. Their theme this year was Genre de Jour. Each day, they concentrated on a different genre, poetry, folktales, fiction, nonfiction, jokes, riddles, puns. They invited guests to read aloud each day on Schoology with some of our favorite books. Many students and teachers participated in our Read Across America Book Share Flipgrid. It was great to hear some fantastic book recommendations for our students to check out. On Wednesday, students dressed up as their favorite book characters. Also, the Aronamick Running Club started this week with over 50 participants this year. They are training hard in preparation for the big race, the Brad Schoner 5K. During the week of March 14th to 18th, Aronamick will celebrate Go for the Greens. Go for the Greens promotes veggies and fruits as good food and fun and encourages kids to eat healthy. Students will be challenged to eat a delicious variety of five vegetables and fruits a day for five days. They'll be given a chart to fill in every serving of vegetable or fruit they eat each day. At the end of the week, at the end of the week, completed charts will be turned into the school nurse, Mrs. Einhorn, and the class will, and the class with the most participants will receive a special treat. They will conclude March with our Aronamick Spring Concert at DHMS. On Wednesday, March 30th, they look forward to another great show with our concert, with our concert band, orchestra, and chorus performances. The Upper Darby High School is ecstatic to present TOP Royal. TOP Royal is a contest for all high school seniors to participate in, and all are welcome to attend. Students will be showcasing their talents and sharing laughs with their peers. The Spring Musical, The Lightning Thief, will be debuting in a little over a month. Rehearsals have been productive, and the cast is itching the show, Upper Darby Community, the results of their hard work. Spring sports season has started yesterday, and students have already begun to prepare for each sport. Students and coaches are excited to kick off the sports season with wins and laughs. Preparation for the senior prom has already begun. The Royal Government has recently started choosing the name for the dance. A graduation meeting was held for students during the school day today. The Mr. Hensel held a meeting for parents and family earlier this evening. If you missed the meeting, don't worry. Mr. Hensel will be posting the PowerPoint shared in the meeting on Schoology. Primus Elementary celebrated Read Across America Week as well. Each student was allowed to dress up as a character from one of their favorite books. On February 22nd, 2022, Primus took it further by letting students wear tux, twinning with teachers, and wearing pigtails. Lastly, the fifth grade students turned recycling into upcycling in their ELA and science classes. As you can see, schools across our district have been very busy encouraging reading and engaged in other interesting and exciting activities. This ends our report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Randy and Majabin, you guys do a great job every month, and we always look forward to your report, so thank you for your hard work. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. And now we will have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
It's easier to do it this way than the habit we got into during the pandemic of sitting at the table and reading it. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I was kind of hopeful that representatives would have stayed for some of the comments I was making tonight, but I will certainly pass along some of the comments that I have tonight about what's facing public education. But good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, who just shared with me that they like coming to the meetings because they like some of the inside gossip that they get on education and what's going on. So that was, that was good to hear. I also want to say thank you to Walter M. Senko and obviously Ms. Simpson for your passion for turning kids on to learning, and it was really wonderful to see. I was, I was hopeful that Mr. Ganges would, would stay. I know he's such an unbelievable parent who comes to all the meetings, and his son speaking tonight, as, as the other student was outstanding as well, but you could see that parent involvement and under your leadership, how great the kids are doing. So I appreciate your leadership there and, and the staff at the school. Please pass that along too, and I'll certainly reach out to Mr. Ganges and Mrs. Ganges, who are very active parents in this school district, and it shows through their, through their kids. Also, to Dan Highland, thank you for your team and your leadership at Charles Kelly Elementary School. As, as we talked about, the positive school climate and culture that many years ago was kind of frowned upon, having to teach these behaviors and model them, and intrinsically rewarding students and extrinsically rewarding students, came through in your presentation and your work. And Alexis, thank you so much for what you're doing at Charles Kelly Elementary School. It's tough, certainly hard being single principals, single administrators in one building, and hopefully we'll change that and get you some support soon, but I want to acknowledge you for your leadership and thank you for what you've done at both Senko and Charles Kelly Elementary School. So thank you. And to Dr. Manfree, who is always so excellent when he speaks publicly, I just want to commend you on your presentation tonight on International Mother Language Day, and for carrying on that tradition. You've worn many hats here in the school district, title programming, elementary school principal, assistant principal at the high school, middle school, principal of middle school, and you've taken on some work with the English and Learners Program here in the school district, and you've carried the torch for many years. So I really appreciate you keeping that tradition alive here in Upper Darby School District. For my report this evening, I will recognize the continued excellence of our student athletes and report on the future concerns facing public education. To begin, please join me in congratulating the following student athlete for their outstanding accomplishment. Tenth grader Elise Olmstead. Elise, if you recognize, last month was quite an award winner as well. She's a member of Upper Darby High School swim team. Elise recently broke the school record, Dave, this was your question, Mr. Board Member Neal, before we walked in, school record for 11 dives at the Central League Championships. Elise recorded a score of 259.45. I've been informed that Elise worked tremendously hard all season, learning nude dives every week. Imagine, Elise broke the school record as a first-year diver on the swim team. So it's her first year diving, and she broke the school record. It's clear that behind every great student athlete is a parent and/or coach, and I've been told that Mr. Tim Beck, the Upper Darby's coach here in this situation, has been instrumental in supporting Elise in accomplishing this goal and record. So congratulations to both the coach and to Elise for her hard work, and we'll pass along those thank yous to her as well. At the beginning of this week, we transitioned our health and safety plan away from requiring masking of our students and staff to recommending and encouraging masking of our students and staff. While we be, while we will be required to update our health and safety plans from time to time under the requirements of the American Rescue Plan and the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, known as ESER, we are hopeful that the most significant mitigation strategies of social distancing and masking are behind us. Our new focus will be on the looming staffing crisis facing public education. During upcoming committee meetings, district administrators- masking of our students and staff to recommending and encouraging masking of our students and staff. While we be, while we will be required to update our health and safety plans from time to time under the requirements of the American Rescue Plan and the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, known as ESER, we are hopeful that the most significant mitigation strategies of social distancing and masking are behind us. Our new focus will be on the looming staffing crisis facing public education. During upcoming committee meetings, district administration will be providing another update on our ARP and ESER spending plans that are focused on providing mental health resources and supports, much of the, the work that we're doing here that you saw in the presentations, professional development, learning loss, after-school and summer learning opportunities, and facility updates. All of these much-needed plans are really at the mercy of labor and staffing, however. I have been providing the board of school directors with weekly updates on the staffing crisis facing public education here in the Commonwealth and across the country. Several recent publications from the Philadelphia Inquirer, Public Media for Central Pennsylvania, CNN, NPR, Edweek, and information from the Pennsylvania Association of School Administration, known as PASSE, have been highlighting the significant decline of one of the most important professions in this country, that of becoming an educator or a teacher. According to a recent PASSE statement, twenty to twenty-five percent of superintendents have left their position last year and this year. And there has been a sixty-seven percent decrease, sixty-seven percent decrease, in the number of young people entering teacher education programs over the last ten years in the Commonwealth. Just to give you some numbers, a little over ten years ago, there were roughly sixteen to seventeen thousand certified teachers coming out of school in the state of Pennsylvania. We're now down to five thousand or less, five thousand or fewer young adults are coming out certified as teachers in the state of Pennsylvania. That's a significant concern. As I stated during my comments with the press and Governor Wolf during his recent visit, the teacher shortage in the Commonwealth is a crisis. I've listened to recent public statements made by the President of the United States during the State of the Union, the current United States Secretary of Education, and other leaders telling us how to spend ARP and ESER funding. I've heard the call to hire staff and for additional services for, in schools. We would love to be able to hire additional qualified staff, but there are two very real obstacles standing in the way of this commentary. The first is the clear lack of professionals in the workforce: teachers, social workers, mental health experts, psychologists, administrators, bus drivers, crossing guards, and other support staff. The second concern is a lack of sustainability. Even if we could hire additional staff, this is one-time dollars with a set timeline to spend those dollars over the next two years. While the support is needed, and we appreciate it, please understand, we do appreciate the financial influx of money. The funding does not provide the long-term financial support for additional staffing or facilities needs. Again, this is not a new problem or phenomenon and not strictly related to the pandemic. I believe the consistent attack on public education over the last ten to fifteen years has resulted in the staffing crisis now facing public education. The ever-increasing unfunded mandates ranging from state and federal assessments, teacher and principal evaluation systems that continue to change, outdated school code in areas such as credit accumulation and instructional models, increased mental health needs of students, and the desire to promote and maintain safe and supportive schools are all areas that lack any real long-term financial support or planning. In the absence of a national and statewide plan, the teacher shortage will not go away anytime soon. The concerns I am presenting here tonight are not just concerns that will be facing the Upper Darby School District this summer. I've included links to just a few national and local examples of the staffing crisis facing public education for your review. As we attempt to catch our breath and come up for air after the past two years, there is a large wave getting ready to crash down on us very quickly. As we process through our district budget over the next few months, we will also be sharing potential solutions to the staffing crisis we will, we will be facing. Now, as I share these dire circumstances, I, I certainly don't want to cloud the positive interaction that took place tonight. The hard work that is taking place in our schools, there were coaches that you saw, Ms. Carrie Chait, who was on there, who's a science coach in the school district, talking about the work that was taking place at Senko Elementary School. That has come from the direction of this board and this administration, finding creative, useful ways to influence student outcomes for the positive. The concern that we face, however, is this wonderful educational opportunities for every Carrie Chait, or Dan Hyland, or Camisha Simpson. There are fewer of those people going into this profession. So my statements tonight were not meant to say it's the end of the world, so to speak. But if education is not seen as what it should be seen, one of the most important resources in this country, then shame on us for not advocating and ringing the bell and asking people to step up. In the state of Pennsylvania, the teacher salary is too low. Across the country, the teacher salary is too low. So I'm asking this board to continue your advocacy for the educators, as I know that you all do, recently passing a new five-year teacher contract with raises to our, to our teachers, which is a positive, to our, committing to our administrators on a very positive note, as I talk about some of these changes. We are going to be announcing soon eleven new assistant principals in the Upper Darby School District, so compliments to the board of school directors. And to our team, figuring out creative ways. But as I said, when the funding does go away in the next two years, we don't want, we not want to create what happened ten years ago when that stimulus money runs out. So we're being creative here in the school district. We'll be sharing how we're spending our ARP/ESER funding here in the next month. We've, we've put that out for public display already, but we're going to remind people of the facilities upgrades, the professional development, and what staffing increases are there. But I do want the public to be aware of, and the board to be aware of, the fact that this administration is deeply concerned about this profession, the future of the profession, the respect of this profession, and the creative solutions that we're going to come up with here internally, as we always do in the Upper Darby School District, under your leadership, driving us to find creative solutions, to figure out how we can staff our schools and continue to provide our students with the best educational opportunities that we have provided and that you saw here tonight on display. But the crisis is real, and we need to keep our eye on it, and please reach out. If there's anybody in the audience tonight who is a young person considering education, it's a wonderful field to go into. If anybody's out there with a college degree that's listening tonight and wants to come back into education, to work with children, and to give back, we have a hundred percent tuition reimbursement here in Upper Darby School District, great benefits, and it's a wonderful place to work. So that's my PR plug. Counsel for you tonight, Dr. Counsel, I put that out there. So Board President Brown, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry, for that comprehensive report, and thank you for that great news about the assistant principals under your leadership. I know that's been your vision for a while, and since you mentioned the five-year contract of the teachers, I wanted to just acknowledge and thank Dr. Counsel for his hard work with his team to make that happen. So thank you for that. We will now have an update on the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting. Mr. Neal will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found in Board Docs. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. So there were three items in the agenda. The first was informational health and safety plan, in which Mr. Marshallak provided updated information regarding district plans and where our masking requirements would be going in the future as we see. The metrics that we utilized as a district basically stayed steady and went down where the administration thought it would be, and so now we move to a masking recommended. Number two was the adoption of textbooks, the World Language French, which is up for a vote tonight. It requires board action. Ms. Catherine Kineya presented a recommendation to approve a French textbook for the World Languages program for use in the secondary schools, beginning with the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Also, which requires board action, is Policy One-O-One. That was the third agenda item, which is the mission statement, vision, and shared values. There were four public comments, three on Agenda Item One, the Health and Safety Plan, and one on Agenda Two, the curriculum for the World Language French Textbooks. And that concludes my summary.
Thank you, Dr. Neal. We will now have an update on the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mr. War Savage will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs. Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. Can everyone hear me? Excellent. We had two agenda items for that evening to discuss, one of which will require board action. The first one was fiscally responsible fact-finding daycare RFP results. The district administration provided an update on the results of a recent daycare RFP. The presentation included the overview of the current operations, RFP requirements, and findings from the proposals themselves. Based on the results, the administration presented their recommendation for future daycare services. The second item was a future facility study discussion, and that was informational. District administration discussed their plan to conduct an updated facility study. The administration will proceed with an RFP process that will include an interview procedure to select a qualified architectural firm to complete the study. There was one public comment on Agenda Item Number One, but as President Brown mentioned a moment ago, all of this information can be found on Board Docs, and people can also watch recordings of our videos on our YouTube channel.
Thank you, Dr. War Savage. Next, the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Vice President Fields.
Board President Brown, the Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please, those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Personnel Report. Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. Before I move for a motion on the Personnel Report, I would like to take a moment of silence to recognize the deaths of two staff members, James Gorman and Lawrence, Lawrence Rivera. Thank you. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I would like to recognize our retirees tonight. There are a very long list of career educators in the Upper Darby School District who have submitted for retirement at the end of this school year. I also wanted to recognize also career building assistant, bus driver, and safety officer, who are also going to be retiring this year. We wish you a safe and healthy retirement. I would also like to recognize all those who are being appointed to the school district in this report. Welcome to the Upper Darby School District family. We hope you'll make your career here in Upper Darby. And congratulations to our, to our, all of our teachers who are moving this month from temporary professional status to permanent professional employees. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just comment on the retirees that you mentioned, Director Mitchell. You know, while we wish them a healthy and happy retirement, you know, we, we think about what Dr. McGarry talked about in his report of replacing them. We don't have a large pool of candidates to replace them, so that's a concern, so just wanted to mention it. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Policy Report, please. Director Desnoyers.
The Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Yes, Director Desnoyers.
There is a change to one policy for, for consideration for a second reading during this meeting. If these changes are approved by the board in this meeting, they will be adopted and implemented. The policy being up for consideration is Policy One-O-One, Mission Statement, Vision, Shared Values. The district's new mission statement and vision are being incorporated into policy. The new mission statement and vision were developed with community input during the process of creating and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four U D S D Comprehensive Plan. After being posted and available for public comment for twenty-eight days, the plan was adopted by the board at its August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Desnoyers. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Supplies Report. Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report. Director Lamar Murphy.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Finance and Budget Report. Director Dr. Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Comments from the board? I'll start with my comments. There's several pieces and several parts of that report. The one that I will not be approving is the, the daycare one. I vote no for that. Several reasons for that, based on some of the things we heard at the last meeting. And, you know, I would have liked a slower implementation of that. I know that's going to happen this summer. I would want, would have wanted to hear from more people that were, that's being affected by it. I know we had one speaker at the last meeting that spoke, and I would have liked to have heard a larger representation of the people that are directly affected by that. We, we talked about, you know, the programs and the, and the different things that we implement that cost us money or the things that we do at a profit. I don't think everything we do has to earn a profit. Some things we do, because it, we take pride in it, it distinguishes us from other districts, and it's a point of pride, so this is one of those things. And I'm not saying I would never approve this, but at this point, my answer is no. Are there any other comments from the board?
I have these, a similar concern about that piece of the report, the daycare part, and I talked to another board member just to bounce general ideas just off of. And in my view, in my own personal view, and I'm not going to drag this out, there's a part of me that would like to just keep things as they are because we're comfortable with that, and we need a lot of normalcy here after going after, or going through and still going through the last two years of anything and everything but that. And I also see the value that the daycare has had in its current form to untold generations of families and, and stuff like that. And part of, one of the many reasons that, in spite of all of our challenges and stuff like that, in this area, people love what Upper Darby offers is because it's, it's homegrown, it's grassroots, it's got that heart and attitude. Everyone sees the value in that. But on the other side, I also know what I signed up for as an elected, as an elected in a volunteer position where you get paid nothing to make some very crucial decisions. Some of those decisions include what are best for not just all the taxpayers, but all stakeholders. That includes taxpayers, the children, the families that rely on these services. You know, where are we going to get funding to continue to operate how we are? We can't keep doing that. We always are looking to optimize. And I'm in marketing, that's something that I And I'm in marketing, that's something that I do constantly. Every day I look at campaigns, they don't always stay the same, they're constantly changing and optimizing. And I'll probably be down to the wire until we go around the table or however we do the vote, but it's, it's a difficult decision. And I'm asking all the board members, no matter how they do decide to vote, to keep that in mind. We all knew what we signed up for when, when we asked the public to trust us to make these really important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts.
I have to agree with Damian wholeheartedly. This is going to be a really rough decision, especially being a newer board member without having enough data to, to have, to, to hear from the staff members at, at the center. Just hearing the one voice last week and then hearing, you know, from our side, I feel like I need to have more information to be able to make an educated decision.
As you know, at the last meeting, I was pretty vocal with questioning the RFP, and I appreciate the work that the administration put into it, the, the research and, and all the information they provided. Now, I know as a school district, right, we provide services, our main objective is K to 12. And so this is going to allow us to continue that service, the K to 12. This is an extra service that we have provided. By utilizing the community YMCA of Eastern Delaware County, who will be paying rent to the Upper Darby School District, we can turn what was a program losing money into something where we're bringing in money to the school district, which is going to allow us to focus back onto our K to 12 curriculum. So I would be in favor of voting yes.
Just to make sure people are clear, the daycare stay in the buildings they're in, right? And basically, there, there are other factors, but the, the big change is that it's not Upper Darby signing the check, it's the YMCA that's signing the check. It should, the goal, what was mentioned in the committee meeting was that current employees have, are first in line for those positions. And the Y wants to expand that program, so they're, they're going to have a need for people that have the experience, have the background, are familiar with the facilities and, and the families. And so, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. My dis, answer to that would be, I would love to hear if they agree with that, the people affected by it, but your point is valid, your point is well taken. Are there any other comments from the board? Director Williams.
Director Fields, thank you for your explanation. I think people needed to hear that. And I do see value in the Y, but I do also, I heard Ms. Devlin speak last week, I thought there was also value in that. And so, yeah, I still think more information is needed, so I would also be a no and not agree with that portion of the report. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Berman, so we're voting on this in its entirety, would we just vote aye? So can you give us some guidance on, there's one aspect of the report that some of us are not comfortable with, so?
Yeah, the, the norm would be to pull that out of the report and have it voted on separately.
Okay.
So it would require a
A poll vote for that?
Motion to do that.
We need to take public comment first, so.
Clearly you're going to need public comment before you do.
Okay, got it.
Sorry. You actually can move it out of the items for vote, so that you'd have two separate public comments, one on everything else and one on that.
Okay. So we need a motion to move it out first, right?
Yeah, I mean, the easiest way, I So the easiest way would be if Dr. Haig and Mrs. Mitchell simply agreed to modify their motion to remove those, that item from it.
So I'll amend my motion to remove the YMCA contract from the Finance and Budget Report and, and so move at this point to vote on the Finance and Budget Report with that portion removed.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you. Okay, so those, only the, the other two items are included now, so now we'll ask for public comment on the other items, not including the daycare. Any, any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. That part of the motion carries. So now we've had comments from the board on the daycare portion, sorry.
So.
A motion to approve that item.
Okay.
No. I'm, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the portion of the report regarding the contract for, with YMCA of Del, Eastern Delaware County.
Second.
Okay, so do we do a poll vote for that piece, or?
So, how would we know? Is anybody on the board?
Doesn't appear to, so now they'll open up the public comment. Are there any comments from the public?
Good evening, Dr. McGary, President Brown, the board, my fellow colleagues, a lot of them are virtual, couldn't be here tonight, but I do have some with me tonight and, as well as the Upper Darby community. I just kind of want to reiterate what I said before with one last plea, to please save our jobs, save our program. I, I think it piggybacks on, it, it's a little confusing because a lot of what was said tonight, you would think supports us as well. We are teachers in our district, we have dedicated many years to our children, K through 12 in the sense that, that we provided some roots before they moved on. As far as the older kids benefiting at the same time, these parents do pay for the program, so it's not something that we are funding for only the younger kids. And I think a big part too, what we, what you also said, Damian, about normalcy this year, a lot of the kindergarten teachers have reached out to us because they were not aware that, that this was something being voted on. And this is just one more thing that's going to add to their getting back to normal next year that's going to be very different. I, I, I know that the Y knows how to run a program, but what's different in the Upper Darby School District is that one of our programs is on-site while the school is in full function with our youngest kids. And I know, I believe, I don't know all of the programs, but in Springfield, it's a separate building, so there's a lot of things that, that happened very smoothly because of the relationship we have as a team with the kindergarten center. And we do, I, you know, I, I really am so passionate about this district, I've always been an advocate for this district. And it's, it's been very personal that everybody has acknowledged always, and we also really care about these kids and have worked really hard as teachers. And you're going to send some of your most caring teachers, you know, away at a time when we need to be here for these kids. Coming back from the pandemic, our numbers were down because we had to socially distance. With a little more support, we could also maybe, you know, we talked about that, getting back to a profit, but I feel like, like our own support has been working against us with this always in mind at the end of the road. We, you know, we had a full-time employee, we haven't been able to get back on our feet because of the lack of support. We were used to kind of staying under the radar and doing our own thing at the kindergarten center, so for many years, we could hold our own without your support. And we tried not, we, we know how busy, you know, our school district administrators and the school board are, so we kind of can hold our own. But now, coming off the pandemic, we, you know, we do need a little bit more guidance, and we hope that we get to do that next year. We really, it means a lot to us. And again, I can only ask that, that you continue to let us do it in the Kinder Kids Program. We just, in fact, the Ganges, I had to run out because as soon as we heard his name, we also had Maxam. And, and, you know, I remember every second of it, I stayed every day till six o'clock with him when his parents would come and pick him up, and they couldn't say enough about the program as they walked out. And, and, you know, I had to tell them that, why we were here tonight. And they were very disappointed because there's something to be said for the way that you feel when you have your first interaction with this school district. We hope to bring in a lot more families at the kindergarten level and to improve at the three to six level as well. We had a meeting with a lot of the employees from the three to six. One of the things that was presented to them and presented to you is that the Y would, they would have first crack, so to speak, at the job. That's not necessarily a fact. They're going to be interviewed, whether or not they get the same position and get to continue on is not a, was not mandated, so, so that is in question, whether they would still be employed. We had an employee at the last meeting who, who said that's her car payment. Most of the employees in the three to six program, which, you know, I've been out of for a long time, are district employees, a lot of them are our support staff, and they do the three to six, because they do the support staff a lot of times for the benefits, and they're working three to six for that extra money to make a car payment or something like that. And so they're not looking for full-time employment with the Y, they're not looking to move on in something else. They want to stay with the school district, and those three hours also are added on to their total hours with the district, which benefits them. So a lot of people are going to lose out that, that are part of, part of you, part of your team. You know, we work for you and we want to do the best for you, so we hope that you'll all consider that. I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin.
President Brown, can we, just for the formality, could we just have Ms. Devlin say her name and address for the record?
Thank you, Dr.
My name is Laura Devlin, 4698 State Road, Drexel Hill. I had one more thing that I just wanted to say too, because a lot of people brought up what a tough choice it was going to be, that, that you're in a position where you have to make tough choices. And while I agree, I think the tough choice tonight is, is to keep our program and not to outsource. I think the easy choice would be to outsource and give it to somebody else. I don't think that the money that, that we cost the district at this point, I think we can improve upon that. I don't think in a district the size of ours, you know, we are not going to cure the financial burdens of the school district. So again, that being said, I hope that you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin again, and thank you, Director Mitchell, for reminding me about that. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I mean, we're going to get them when we do the opposed, you know, we'll know the exact number. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. I oppose, Edward Brown.
I oppose, Deborah Williams.
I oppose, Damian Moore Savage.
Okay, those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the collateral assignment reports, starting with the Delaware County Community College. Vice President Fields.
So the, the D C C license, still haven't had a meeting yet, but I was, I was emailed and asked if I would help fill a vacancy on the Board of Trustees' trustees, interview positions for the vacancies on the Board of Trustees', and Upper Darby is a large part of the Community College and a large, one of the largest funders, so I will be participating in that, and that's what I have from the D C C.
Thank you. The D C I U, Director Mitchell.
President Brown, may I? I'm sorry, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Fields, I just want to say thank you for doing that, spending your time in doing that. I know Delaware County Community College is planning to build a significant campus in Upper Darby, and I appreciate you representing Upper Darby's concerns and spending your, your volunteer time to do that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I hope the meetings are virtual.
All right, now, moving along to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Board of School Directors of the Intermediate Unit met last Wednesday for purposes of their regular board meeting. One of the biggest things on the agenda, which I know Dr. McGary shared with each board member today, and there'll be more details in our Normal Friday update, was that the Board of Directors passed their general operating budget, their special education budget, and the budget for the Delaware County Technical Schools. The majority of school boards in Delaware County have to approve those budgets, so you'll be seeing that probably on next month's reports, after you have some time to review. If you have any questions, please reach out to me so that I can get those answered by the Finance Director at the I U. The, the I U also sent students, and, and some of our students, to different events this past month. Some went to the Skills USA competition at the Pennsylvania College of Technology in Williamsport. We sent other kids to the one in Hershey, the same competition, and we also sent students from Upper Darby to the Cosmetology International Beauty Show at the Jacob Javits Center in New York. So it's good to see our students finally getting to experience their education in person again. I know next month, Dr. McGary will share one of our students who won at the Spelling Bee that the I U held over the weekend. And that concludes my report. We have our committee meeting next Wednesday.
Thank you. Legislative Council, that meeting is tomorrow morning, so Dr., Director Ward Savage and I will be on that meeting. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee.
Can I just ask a question? Is there anything significant coming out of the I U meetings? Because I know, it seems like our meeting, the Legislative Council, our meeting's always the night before, and I feel like I might be missing some things that might be going on in the state. Is there anything that we need to know, or how can we get the information?
I, I think they sent out the agenda, I'll have to look at it, and I'll send that out to the, to you and the rest of the, the rest of my colleagues, so you'll have that, you'll know what's coming, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Director, Dr. Haig, the Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee.
No update at this time.
Okay. Home and School, Director Ward Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. We've already kicked off the Dan McGary Home and School Tour 2022 Spectacular. Last night, I believe, we were with, well, it was the whole district, district-wide Home and School Meeting. And we're going to be covering essentially the highlights of Dan's report from earlier this evening, but one thing I want to definitely emphasize is, please, everyone, take advantage of the fact that Home and School Associations do exist, a whole bunch of information and resources and connectivity happen through that, because as you will find in your participation of these Home and School Meetings, one of the important things that we touch on is the fact that we do need to work better as a school community and as a township community to build a better climate and better culture within those families, because students come into our schools, they don't leave their problems at the door, they bring them in here, and it creates a really difficult time, and we're just trying to figure everything out. But one of the best places to do all that is right inside of a Home and School Meeting, so please reach out to us if you do not know when yours take place, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much. Technology, Dr. McGary, is there anything of note going on with technology?
Yeah, we're, we're looking into some new technology for safety and security. I was contacted by District Attorney Jack Stolzheimer, we're playing phone tag, it sounds like there's some monies available locally, and we're also, Mark Manley and I are looking at whether, other technologies to keep our schools safe and secure. Obviously, tonight, you saw the fruits of our labor, meeting with the, with our team, putting new technologies in place for our schools, coding, the, I, I thought it was great that the Senko student, that the Senko school gave them their, their Chromebooks. It was nice to hear the kids really excited about that. Little do they know that you gave them the Chromebooks from the school board, but, you know, we're, we're continuing to be one-to-one as a school district, improving the technologies, and we're now moving toward what other technologies are there to keep our schools safe and secure as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. P S B A, I'll just share one piece of information. P S B A has a leadership series, a five-part leadership series, and I was asked to be one of the, the speakers for the, the February one, which was a couple of weeks ago, and they asked me to talk about leadership, you know, leading a board and some of the nuances and, you know, that come with being, leading a board. And I talked about the Friday chat and some of the things that I put in place that, that I think work and help facilitate communication and just keeping and understanding the pulse of your board, so that was very well received. I'm trying to get a, a copy of the recording, it was virtual, so I'm trying to get a copy of it, and that way I'll share it with my colleagues and, and Dr. McGary and anybody else that wants to see it. Anything else, P S B A, really? Vice President Fields.
There was a P S B A leadership meeting today. I missed the one Ed spoke at, I'm really sorry, still, still really sorry, he's not going to let me forget about it. I also want to say, if you're not going to Home and School Meetings, Damian makes a wonderful pitch for it, so thank you for your enthusiasm, Damian, I think it's really good. So today's P S B A leadership meeting was about superintendent evaluations, that's why I wanted to mention it. And so, in the, but it was interesting, P S B A offers an automated tool, and so they talked about that a little bit, and we've, we've used that before, it's, it's a very nice tool, it's customizable and things like that. There were some good discussions, but it's, it's interesting. it's interesting, no coordinating with Dr. McGary. It was also discussed there about the 20 superintendents retiring. And I guess that's across the state. So that was really the topic of conversation in the context of evaluations. And and what it means is that it's a it's a superintendent's market, because there's going to be a need. And so for the community, what that means is that the communities understand that supers, superintendents have a choice, more so now than maybe previously, of where they can work. And so they can certainly choose to work someplace where they won't be called a tyrant or other various names. For school boards, and this is where we had a lot of the conversation, it's important that we remain a team of 10. The ingredients to remain a team of 10 is to keep lines of communication open, to get clarification when needed, the trust that we are working together towards the betterment, the betterment of the district. And when something leaves a bad taste in your mouth, communicate with the team and always add a little salt and pepper. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Policy liaisons, Director Des Noirs or Director Neil?
Sure. We held our monthly policy liaison committee meeting yesterday. And much of the meeting was spent discussing policy 707, use of facilities. This is, this policy was was mentioned last fall as needing attention. And more recently, I believe last month, Director Mitchell brought it up. And what what came out of initial work on this was that there were, there were enough issues, and they were significant enough that that the policy liaison committee requested to have this policy put on the agenda for the April Finance and Operations Committee meeting. The the thinking is that there would be a short, short presentation with, you know, some points for the board to consider, and a a full board discussion about how the board would like to update this policy. Because the the board made a a significant change to this policy, clo- you know, a year and a half, two year, a year and a half ago. And essentially, we're still trying to work through the kinks because the the significant updates from the summer of 2020 were driven by the changes in the township and the Recreation Department. And we, there are, there are still issues falling out of those changes that need to be addressed in this policy. So look for, as I said, a presentation and discussion at the April Finance and Comit- Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
Thank you very much. Communications, Director Dr. Haig or Director Mitchell?
I just wanted to say that we continue to send out the monthly summaries of the board meetings. And and with Ms. Buford's help, we make it look pretty. And we add some different events across the district that would be important to Families Center. We hope that that's helpful. So if anyone wants to get it, you can subscribe online on the school board page, you can find it.
That takes us to old business. Is there any old business from board members? Yes, Director War Savage?
Yeah, real quick, I believe several of us had opportunities to read at the, at all of our district facilities this past week for Read Across America. I lost count how many schools I read at, but I had fun at each and every one and one in particular. I went, I walked to Bywood. Literally, I went during my lunch period at work because it's that flexible, I work from home, walked over, sat down in front of the fourth grade classroom. And these kids don't know me from Jack, pardon me. They don't know me at all. And
Better, better.
I sit down there and I'm, and I look something similar to this, and I'm about to read a book about ramen, go figure. And the the young gentleman says, homophobia has no place here. And he gave me a high five. And for obvious reasons, that made me feel really, really good. And in, again, in spite of what you might sometimes hear about negatives that come out of schools or wherever you're at. I mean, y'all's kids are beautiful, man. They they say and do the most awe inspiring things. And that was just one of those things that just touches you, and I appreciate that moment.
Thank you for sharing it.
I have old business as well. Last year and the year before, we talked about the legislative platform and priorities from the PSBI. And I received the PSBA magazine in the mail site. Unfortunately, I didn't grab it on my way out the door. But I did notice that the platform priorities for submission are due beginning May 20. And I know that we did put together a few people on this board who were going to be discussing, and we did not end up submitting anything last year. And I just wanted to make the people that were on the legislative platform for this, for our board, aware that the the deadline is approaching. They just put it out, say, they do not have it on its website, on their website yet. But it does begin May 20. And I'm going to send it via email either tonight or tomorrow morning, just in case. We want to try to get together a platform to submit to the platform committee for this year.
Thank you for mentioning that. And I know Vice, former Vice, former Director Curry was part of that, and she's not here now. So we'll make sure we have adequate representation or committee to put that together so we actually will submit something.
I mean, if we want to. I think it's something that we might want to
We'll look at it.
Look at. You know, so, you know, if you wanted to review the legislative platform for this year, I know that one of the overarching things we're talking about with Mrs. Curry was reparations. And I don't, I don't know what the status of that platform position is, if any, if any other boards are working on it. But I know the Dairy Area School District had been working on it extensively. So maybe we could even reach back out to Ms. Curry for her connections.
From my recollection, that is part of this platform, but we'll get the specifics after we read it. So is there any other?
It is, it is not part of this year's platform.
Yeah, okay.
Not part of the core legislative principles for 2022.
Okay, okay. I'll double check. Thank you. Is there any other, any other old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members?
I'm sorry, I have new business as well. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Spring Advocacy Day for PSBA is coming up on April 25. It is a really important day on the Hill. It is in person this year. And I hope that fellow school board directors will join me. I'm happy to carpool.
Thank you for that. Any other new business from board members? Director Des Noirs, your mic is on. Do you have any new business or?
I apologize.
No problem. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three minute time limit. In accordance with policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. So we'll start with the people that signed in. Laura Devlin, I think she's still here. I think she, I think I saw her leave. Ms. Buford, are there any online comments?
No, sir. We did not receive any comments through the email or the phone number that's been provided.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
Something?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.